This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Davenport Public Library Order Trustees to order. It's Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. Meeting in the small meeting room, the main library. First item on our agenda is roll call. Call and roll. Malavika?
Yeah, here.
Sylvia?
Here.
Amanda?
Here.
Maggie?
Here.
Judy?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Craig? No Craig. And myself, Steve Emming, I am president. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Tom.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, there's very discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Hearing and seeing no one, move on. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications. First item there is the Friends. Friends had a very enjoyable meeting. Basically consisted of a retirement lunch for Amy.
I think we can share that, and Tracy, can correct me if I'm wrong, that the annual appeal that the Friends has sent out has been really successful, and I think we're over gold at this point.
We're close to nine thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Really?
Canceling my donation.
I don't even know. And so those funds were earmarked for the early literacy program for books for newborns.
Yes. That's a thousand books? Is that what that is?
So it's kind of part of a thousand books.
Okay.
Yep.
So Amy, that's the Giving Tuesday, right?
Giving Tuesday. And the annual.
And annual front.
Yes. So the Giving Tuesday, we took like a little subset of
Lovely.
early literacy. So combining those two, we're almost at ten thousand.
Lovely, lovely, very, very excited about it. I was very happy my daughter donated to.
I know that was so sweet.
I was very happy.
Okay, let's see. Moving along, next item under reports and communications are the committee reports. Finance, anything, Tom, from finance?
Um, just to note that if you look at the budget report, we're forty-one percent through the year, and our total city appropriation is at forty-two percent. So we're pretty much right where we should be in terms of spending. So.
Good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is personnel. Amanda, anything for personnel?
Nope, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Next item under committee reports is the advocacy committee. Malavika, anything to share?
Oh, we had an excellent meeting. Lexi, thank you to you and all the staff members who are a part of it. That's the DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, and there's so many good ideas, and some have come into fruition, and we will be actually having a stable, by stable I mean, and plan in action in the new year, starting in the new year, things like exhibits, you know, highlighting festivities and festivals of different communities that we, you know, have around the city. That's one. And second, I just wanted to share that at one of the Davenport School Foundation and school districts meeting, I did share about our social worker, Quinn, and especially because there are quite a few parents in the district who need help, and they can indirectly help their children, so, you know, and I mentioned to them about going to the website, our Davenport Public Library website, and taking an appointment, because she's right there, right, on the homepage itself. So it was something that everybody thanked that we have somebody there, so that's all from my end.
Great, thank you, Malavika.
If I could just make sure, I'm just, I'm so appreciative that the DEI committee is going, coming forward with some ideas and some things we can do to try to accomplish their goal. I think those are things we always need to keep in mind as we go forward.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Yes, it would be.
And while we're here also, I would mention that, I believe it's in Sunday's paper, there was a big article about Cedar Rapids, out of Cedar Rapids, about their diversity efforts, and reading through that, I mean, they were doing it a little bit differently. I think they were also checking the circulation periodically or different groups at times. I'm not exactly sure how they were doing it, but they were actually looking at the circulation also to see what was being checked out. And I didn't get a chance to test this, but there was an article in the paper a day or so before that that said, maybe it's in the same edition, that said that the Quad City Times e-edition was going to be available to anybody for, through like the first of the year. So if anybody, you know, doesn't get the print paper, and I'm not sure if that was on their website or not, but might be another way to look at it, because there wasn't an diversity article.
There was, yeah.
It's too bad they couldn't have come to us, but. I suppose it's easier to pick up somebody else's article than me. To report your own.
As prominent as that, right?
Anyway, moving on. The next item under reports and communications is the director's.
Hi, yeah, the, just a few updates on some of these projects that are in process. So after the pre-construction meeting we had for the new interior signage at Main, so they're planning to do installation in February with a completion date of March 1st. So as I indicated, Casey's going to be coordinating that for us. The new furnishings project. The bids for that are due on January 18th of '22 at 10:00 a.m. So there's a possibility, depending on how the bids come in, that that can be on the agenda item, agenda for the meeting on the 18th, right, because the board meets at noon that day. So Lexi and I talked about that, and if things come in really favorably, and it's not complicated to try to figure out, then otherwise they'll probably be looking at a special meeting for that, so that can get approved. When I talked about the ARPA projects, I completely neglected to mention the Fairmont Community Center project. So where they are with that right now is the city project manager, they're doing negotiations with the architect who came out on the top after, for their ARP, after scoring in interviews. And then that should be for approval by council to select the architect for the first cycle in January. So that would be like the second Wednesday in January would establish that. My understanding of the first steps after that happens is going to be the community engagement piece, to find out what services people want to see, people in the neighborhood in that community and area that it's going to serve, what they're going to want to see from them. That's where that is going. The annual report, so this is had off the presses, so literally Lexi just printed some and folded them. It hasn't been sent to the printer yet, we just kind of gave it final approval this morning. So this will be the annual report that we send out and make available to our patrons. So we, it's a little bit more than the previous two years when we just had a bookmark, but we wanted to also have a chance to highlight some of the other things we do that people don't know about, and it seems like a good chance to do that, because there are just so many things that as we found out with the strategic plan surveys that went out that people just still don't understand that we do. So we thought that we would take advantage of that opportunity, and I think that's.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm looking at this, and under your collection report, right at the very top of the page, it says total items in collection. Sure that number's right? I mean, it seems low to me.
I can certainly double check. We can double check, but.
I mean, you know, that will be anything counting everything that people could check out, I presume.
Right, yeah, that number used to be larger. We used to have way more paper government documents that were considered part of the collection, and rolls and rolls, not rolls, but tons and tons of those speech cards, and we don't receive a lot of that information anymore from the feds, they just quit producing it, so that's one place. But collection usage has changed, so because nobody's reading them, we have probably pulled more items than we've added, maybe not this year, but over previous years.
Okay, you know, it could very well be right.
So we can certainly.
I just wonder.
We can certainly double check that number.
Especially with COVID, as much as we've been closed.
Yeah.
It may be right, I just, I just wonder.
Yeah, if I might ask, then what's the difference between total items in collection and total collection use?
So the collection use would be circulation.
Okay, so that's one item could go on twice, and that's two.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question, is canopy of an app like Lippy, how do I get it? It doesn't say. Yeah, you get that one, is that how you get it? I think I'll be excited about that.
That's great.
We're the fully house force.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, I misunderstood the question. So if that's what we have in-house, then I agree with that. Just wanted to make sure I actually understood.
Yeah, we'll double check that number, Tom, and. I think that's it, other than to just certainly formally thank everybody for their support over these past six and a half years. This is my last trustee meeting as director, so, I mean, we think all together we did a lot of really wonderful things, but none of it would have happened without a strong and supportive board. That's really kind of the first thing that has to happen, so thank you all for that.
Well, we will miss you, Amy. I think you're a pleasure to work with. I really do. You don't break a sweat, I appreciate the people who don't break a sweat when they're solving difficult problems. You know what I mean? Like, I see that as a gift that you bring to us. Thank you.
So I ditto all of your sentiments, and I'd like to add, as a library person, you know, before I joined the board, I've seen you and Mary as someone who, you know, what's your style of administrative, you know, for us, who are Jewish in the field, you know, you guys are like mentors, so thank you for that as well.
And we will celebrate you formally, which I just invited someone to my house for dinner on that night, and I'm like, why, why does that date son familiar away? That might not work, that's not a double book. But I didn't ever put it on my own calendar, so who knows?
Next item on the agenda, under reports and communications, is a report from the council liaison.
Steve, I do have an email from.
And I'm here, guys, I'm here. I got on.
Zero, zero. I was just about to read what Mary had said. Okay, cool.
Okay, so, yes, I'm on the phone. If I drop out, I apologize, we're traveling through the Wilderness Road in Kentucky, but I wanted to be with you guys today. In any case, so I wanted just very briefly, but the council is done for the year, they had one, two-week session in December, and so the new council will be sworn in, it'll be the first weekend, January. And so we start back in January, there are four weeks of budget planning sessions that start, and we'll be going through January. I think we have four weeks this year, and so, and I know Amy has been working with her team on budgeting and everything else. I did want to just say one thing to you guys that was, meant a lot to me last week. You know, I brought along with Alderman Group a resolution to the council opposing the current plan for the juvenile detention center, and it was based on a lot of different elements. And the council did vote to approve it, which was kind of an extraordinary thing. We don't usually make comment about other governmental bodies, but in the process of talking about this to council, I went back and looked at the ARPA dollars, which I know you, I heard the tail end of that, and it was, I was very, I added up all the dollars the council had put toward diversion programs, had voted to approve, and this excludes the money for neighborhood revitalization and for affordable housing. It was over nine million dollars of the ARPA funding that was put towards some sort of programs to deal with youth, and I was very proud that, to be able to note that the library was part of that, and that when the ARPA dollars, when it went out to staff, what can we do? I think it was library that came forward and said, how about social worker, how about pre-K literacy, how about a community center that, you know, has a large component for children? And that was very outstanding to be able to, you know, to talk about that, and I just wanted to let you know that it reminded me again of how powerful you see your mission to the, to the community that you serve, and it really means a lot. So I just wanted to share that with you, and that's really all I had today, but I wish you all so happy holidays.
Thanks, Marion.
Thank you very much, Marion, I appreciate it.
Safe driving, safe travels.
Moving along then. I ought to just put this on the agenda, but I want to circle back. I'm going to blame it on the technical difficulties, although everybody knows it's not the first time I've done this, so that's probably not good, but I did forget to introduce other people who are present beyond the members of the board. So also in attendance at this meeting is Amy Grosskoff, the library director, Lexi Riley, the assistant director, Tracy Moore, the development director, and Casey Shipley, the recorder. Okay, my apologies for that. Okay, moving along then to new business. First item under new business is a motion to approve the hiring of Jeff Collins as our new library director.
Absolutely. I second it.
Okay, thank you. Sylvia and Malavika, a motion and a second to approve the hiring of Jeff Collins as our new library director. Is there any discussion?
If I could, Steve, I just want to thank everybody involved for, I mean, this was a lengthy process. I mean, it took a while, and at the end, we had some really tough choices, which is a very good thing, that we ended up with good candidates to choose from. So I just want to thank everybody, board members, staff, everybody, because I, this go around, I think, went much better, you can remember, the last time. I think this process was much better.
Well, the recruiter was exceptional.
Yeah, they were very good.
I thought, they provided us so much support, and I guess compared to the last time, where we just didn't get that kind of support at all. So, yeah, it did, it went better, but I felt it was like my new full-time job. And I'm like, go into work, Bill. But it was worth it, you know, to do that and to have that much hands-on with it, was, I think it was good. I don't think there's a single person that doesn't feel good about the process, but, I mean.
Well, worth the money spent.
Absolutely.
They earned their money.
I would recommend them again to anybody.
Me too. Yes, sorry. I have what Tom says. On we go. So we have motion to approve hiring Jeff Collins as our next library director, and a second, is there any further discussion? Yes?
Steve, just, so the next process is like we have to re-communicate as immediate release? I mean, how does that happen? I mean, is that how it is?
So Brittany already has a press release drafted out, so after this meeting, we'll send an email to staff, and then we'll send a copy of the press release along to mayor, council, city administrator, some of those folks, letting them know that it's going, that the press release will then be released to the media tomorrow morning. So that gives hopefully folks involved a little bit of a chance to see that before it might hit the media.
Right. A big scoop, right?
Right, so what, I mean, we don't know, we don't have any control over, you know, what the media does with it, but at least if something goes out, that hopefully staff will have had a chance, a reasonable chance to see that, and council and city administration as well, so.
Steve, this is related, but not, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to bring it up, but I don't see it on the agenda. You and Jennifer and I, we met to discuss Jeff onboarding, how we can help and support. And so one of the things we talked about was involving the board in putting together the goals and, you know, achievements, what we would like from him in the first six months. So when are we going to bring that in?
I will, I'm going to send an email out to board members, ask them to give thought to those items, so.
And then we'll discuss it at the January meeting?
Somewhere along the line, yes.
Yeah, it's probably, I mean, Steve and I talked a little bit about that, that's probably a bit of a closed session. Because it really relates to evaluation.
Sure. Sure, that makes sense, yeah.
Because I guess we'll be setting up some expectations, and so.
And I just wanted to give everybody like a heads up that we're going to, that's a step that we're going to do, because that will be an integral part of his success, is our communication to him, and aligning those expectations. And that's the key to success.
And Steve, and then later you too, Sylvia, I had an interesting question, and you all had asked me, and I am writing it down, and I haven't shared it with you all, because I had moved from a different community to a new community here, you all did ask me questions about, you know, how can we make the process easy, kind of. So I do have a few thoughts which I need to, which I would share.
Sure.
For this time, so.
Okay, so, have a motion and a second to approve hiring Jeff Collins as our new library director. I'll call for the vote. Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Oh, no.
Yes.
Yeah, he said no.
The woman said no, but I said yes.
Pretty funny.
Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you, Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig's not here. And my own, oh, it's a second here. Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you, and my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to approve the appointment of Lexi Riley as interim director from January 7th until February 13th, including a salary increase of $1,000 per month. Do we have a motion in that regard?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe?
Second.
Thank you, Tom? Have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Lexi Riley as interim director from January 7th until February 13th, including a salary increase of $1,000 per month. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. Amanda?
Yes.
I'm mad.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries.
Thanks for taking it.
Yes.
My pleasure.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to approve temporary salary increases for the HR Operations Manager and the Business Office and Facilities Manager of $500 per month, in recognition of additional tasks they will perform during the interim period of January 7th through February 13th. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, a second, Malavika, thank you both. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, I'll call for the vote of the motion to approve temporary salary increases for the HR Operations Manager and the Business Office and Facilities Manager of $500 per month, in recognition of additional tasks they will perform during their interim period of January 7th through February 13th. Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Thank you. Last item under new business is a motion to release Cafe de Marie from their lease obligations. Do we have a motion in that regard?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom?
I just have a, can I have a record?
Is there a discussion?
Yeah.
Didn't we extend?
So we did, we extended the time period where they, they didn't have to pay rent, and then they were going to extend their lease out. They got in touch with me and said that, you know, business conditions being what they are, that they just don't feel that they can proceed with the project, unfortunately. So they asked, and we will release them from those obligations, so.
Didn't we have anybody else who was interested in it that we held off because of them?
So while we were waiting for them to open, we did get inquiries from a couple of places, and we just shared with them that it was under lease. So when Steve and I met, we talked about that, there's really, there's no real expense to us other than some time to re-release an RP, to see if there are other folks out there who might be interested, so, so we will do that probably sometime early in the new year. I think we looked at schedule, and we thought that it would, we worked back from when the new director will start, so that decision process and the process of finding somebody new, that could be something that he could be involved in, so.
We sure haven't done well with this, have we?
It's been a challenge, yeah, so.
They didn't make any repairs or changes or anything, did they?
They did not, but we did.
Yeah, for them.
For them, right? So, but we did receive some rent from them while they were, you know, kind of in process and hoping to open, so I think that that, those monies collected pretty much covered the cost that we incurred, so.
Well, and our new director's current location, they have a cafe, I saw on their website, so.
I feel like I should just go around to all my coffee shop contacts and say, look, can you give me a commitment here? You know, I don't know.
You know, as soon as that's out, that would be absolutely fine for you to go out and say, hey, you know what, did you know that there's this thing out?
Because I'm a frequenter, as you all know.
Yes.
Coffee shops.
And sometimes, and I don't know whether this is feasible, but sometimes I think, like in a Scott community college has a culinary school, and their students need things to create and sell. Or for the, for that matter, Downford School District has a successful culinary program. And, you know, with the COVID thing, of course, they haven't had that, you know, get-together party and students make things. So, you know, sometimes I think, would that be an opportunity? Because we also work, you know, also Scott Community College's library, you know, would there be something where, I mean, I don't know how it works, but just a thought throwing out.
When we first started off at Fairmont, you know, that went pretty good for quite a while. And then, then the person that was operating it, not even know how long, it seemed like it was quite a while, maybe a couple of years. And then that person sold their business and went along well for a while. So it all depends on who you get in there, I guess. And of course, there's no, no drive-up window, so that's.
Who's doing the Bunderf library right now?
They don't have one anymore.
They don't have one either. What about the Moline Library? I know they have one.
Judy's interested.
Maybe someone, I don't know who it is.
It's a local person.
Yeah.
And the lady sold her business to another individual. I mean, it was a lady who used to operate it. And now there's another guy who does it, but I hear it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of population, a lot of folks who live out in that eastern neighborhood. So would have fairly easy access and probably have the disposable income to spend. Hopefully we can.
I mean, this goes in every kind of community, you know, like in small libraries and huge libraries, they have coffee shops that work, I don't know.
Yeah, I think some libraries, though, actually run them themselves.
Right.
And I don't think we want to get in the business of.
Everyone could do it.
Running a coffee shop.
Maybe Jeff will think that's a great idea.
Let's get in the coffee shop.
You know, you, yeah, no.
I should just do it. Really, come on. I dream of being a barista, couldn't be realized. It's a thought.
Any other discussion on this item? Okay. Have a degree from their lease obligations?
Do they have any materials stored in? Sorry.
Okay, Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to old business. First item there is a motion to approve the library privacy and confidentiality policies. We discussed those previously in our last meeting. entertain a motion to approve those.
Still move.
Thank you, Tom?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second.
Oh, okay, thank you, Sylvia. So a motion and a second to approve the library privacy and confidentiality policies, is there any discussion? During done, I'll call for the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item under old business is a motion to approve the library exhibits policy. That also was discussed in our last meeting. entertain a motion in that regard.
Still move. Go ahead.
Thank you, Judy?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. So a motion and a second to approve the library exhibits policy, is there any discussion?
It, it, Amy, just a quick question. Let's say a figure art museum wants to do something with their recent, with whatever recent exhibit, let's say Monet, and we have books on Monet. I mean, would they be, and I don't know what they want to exhibit, but they just want to showcase that exhibition because we also work with them. So are they allowed to come in with maybe, there might be pictures or posters, so that, that can be treated as an exhibition, right?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any further discussion? Not all. Call for the vote on the motion to approve the library exhibit policy. Tom?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda under old business is a motion to approve the library strategic plan for the years 2022 through 2024. As you all remember, we've been working on this a while.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And it's been good work. I think we had a lot of good discussions and learned a lot of things. And the plan that was sent out, in the, the document that was sent out with the packet, included dates that had been adjusted to kind of spread it out more evenly over the time period. And appreciate staff's help on that and Amy's. And so, anyway, looking for a motion to approve the library strategic plan for the years 2022 through 2024.
I still move, Steve.
Thank you, Malavika, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Have a motion and a second to approve the library strategic plan for the years 2022 through 2024. Is there any discussion?
I do have a couple of, there were a couple of things that we noticed like 30 minutes before this meeting, that are basically copy and paste errors that we want to make sure folks are aware of. So on page four, under strategic issue two, under that first objective, objective in that first cell, there's simply a line that needs to get removed. So that's just, that was me not being very competent with my Microsoft Word skills. But underneath that.
And now you won't need them.
So underneath that, though, so there's, there are five action points under objective one. And then there are three action points that don't have an objective in that box. So that is supposed to read strategically attend more community events to reach more underserved communities. So we need to make sure that that gets added back in. And then.
Did you repeat that again, please?
It should read strategically attend more community events to reach more underserved communities. And then if we move forward to page six, the second objective is to, really relates to programming. But one of the measures of success, number three, is to increase circulation to pre-COVID levels, so that doesn't really relate. So we would propose deleting that particular measure of success under that objective. And then on page seven, sort of the same thing, that the objective that says assure a welcoming culture for all patrons, and that addresses increase of circulation to pre-COVID levels as a measure of success. But patrons who are welcome to the library may or may not check out materials. So we would propose deleting that. And then that next objective, to diversify staff to better reflect the community at large. Somehow, again, one of those measures of success, nightmare two talks about increasing number of patrons. So that needs to be deleted as well.
The library just got crazy with copy and paste.
Yeah, it was a copy and paste thing, yeah.
I think I'm on fire by the time.
It's a talent when copy and paste errors happen.
Amy, if you please go back, what was the very first one?
Oh, the, yeah, for the, on page six, increase.
Six?
The measure is called this.
Yeah. Right, under measures of success for this second objective.
Number three? No.
Yes.
Hey, that's, oh, the second.
I'm sorry, strategic issue three, and then there, the second objective there, one of the measures of success talks about circulation.
Yeah. So before, before that, you added the title of the objective on page four.
I didn't go back far enough for you.
But, but what was the one before that?
Oh, there's just on the objective right above that?
Yes.
You notice there's a line across there that makes it look like there's an objective missing.
Oh, I see.
By number five.
Because there's an objective missing.
Missing.
Okay, yeah, between four and five, under the objective, okay.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, so backing up just a bit here. So then, Malavika, are you okay with your motion to approve this plan with those changes that Amy has just given us?
Yes, Steve. Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the library strategic plan for.
Who spearheads this?
Pardon?
Who spearheads facilitating this?
The staff.
The director.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I shouldn't have asked.
But you know, the place where the board might be involved would be if the decision is made to request some city funding for this. Some, some, because you'll notice there's budget on some of these columns. Some of that might be deciding to use some funds in various gift accounts to fund some of these. Some of that might be Tracy writing grants that the board would, you know, authorize us to apply for. So, so that, that's one of the, the places the board potentially is going to have some more involvement.
But also, I think our involvement is making sure that the director is doing what it takes to implement strategic plan. I mean, that really is our job.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, so the board has decided that we, yes. Yeah, the board has decided this is the direction you want the library to go. So it's up to you to make sure that that, the staff is following through.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
I, I, Steve and all of us here, I just want to add, after, after now finally going through the plan, I realize it all the more, Lexi, that the DEI committee has extreme responsibilities, you know? And I think, seeing how everybody is so pumped up and doing things, I think we can do it.
Okay, okay, so, any further discussion? So I will call for the vote on the motion to approve the library strategic plan for the years 2022 through 2024 with the changes to pages four, six, and seven that we just, we just, Amy just presented and we discussed. Okay, call for the vote. Tom?
Steve?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just have to let you know real quick that Amanda had to leave. She wrote in the chat, she had to go real quick, so she's not, she won't be able to vote on this one.
Okay, thank you very much, Maggie, appreciate that.
Sorry.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. On we go with a new strategic plan.
Steve?
Yes.
There are notes in the agenda, but I, I just, and I don't know if this is appropriate this time, but I, I just want to thank Amy for her years of service. She has gone above and beyond in so many ways to make sure that we were providing as much library services as we could in spite of all the difficulties that has been thrown at her. So I just personally want to make sure that we express our appreciation for your service.
Yes.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, just one thing I want to say, a couple of things, actually. This card is a thank you card, as you can see. Very big thank you card. And this is from the staff and has some comments, so take a look at that as you go after the meeting. Also, one of the items included in our packet was, maybe you'll have to help me with what this is, I think it's the state library information form.
Right, so we fill out a statistical report to the state library every year. That was a ROI, Lexi gets to do a lot of that, Casey can scratch her up on the financial stuff. And then this pulls together who we consider more of our peer libraries across the state in terms of not just the population served, but also these, generally speaking, our libraries that are in more urban areas as opposed to suburban, you know, suburbs like Ankeny, something like that. So. And I do have, if we have, if we have time for it, I, I did highlight some of those, the lines in this.
Yes, oh, thank you.
Kind of as part of our staff training.
Yes.
Or not staff training, board training. So there's a few areas I think we might want to just kind of take a look at. Because as you go through and make these comparisons, sometimes things where it might look like we're, we're really doing not so well, and sometimes there are certainly like reasons behind that, so. So Maggie, can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So can you scroll up a little bit, Casey, to kind of the first highlighted, which might be the eBooks? Yeah, so.
About halfway down on the first page.
Yeah, and it's, so it's highlighted on the screen to make it easier to see. This is the dollar amount that we spend on eBooks every year. This number is artificially inflated or is inflated because of COVID, right? So we knew that where there weren't going to be as many patrons coming in to check out physical materials, and we saw an increase in demand for eBooks. So we did add additional funding to that last year. Lexi, do you remember how much? I want to say it was probably about $30,000 that we, that we increased that budget line by. And so that gets to be important as you look at the next highlighted line, which is our total collection expenditures. And compare that to some of our other peer libraries. Cedar Rapids, in particular, they spent about $300,000 more than we did on materials. And you can see that the amount that they have then to spend on eBook and other similar kinds of things.
But in Iowa City, what's their CIRC as compared to ours?
Their CIRC is, and the total CIRC numbers are, are down below, but they are, their, their total circulation is much higher than ours in Iowa City, yeah. University towns are a hard comparison, though. University towns are a hard comparison, though, because there's such a highly educated population there. That, along with all the students who are used to using a university library, who sometimes then come to the public library, so those are a hard comparison for us. Ames is the same way, Ames has really high CIRC per capita, just like the Agassi Public Library does. In terms of our collection expenditure, our amount we get from the city this past year was $415,000. So that additional comes from funding from the friends and some of the endowments that support the collection. So as that number stays stable from the city, that gap in funding is going to continue to grow. So something to be aware of. We asked for some additional this year that is not going to come through for us the way the budget is currently written.
It's something we need to work, work on in the future as we gain further.
To figure out how to get that number higher.
I, just an observation. It would seem that if you back up and look at this from, I guess, a more public perspective, it would seem that that is an easier ask to the general public. I mean, if you were thinking of it in terms of a fundraising, fundraising kind of thing.
Yeah.
That it's, to a lot of the general public paying for salaries is perceived as dumping money down a black hole. Whereas we need to buy additional materials for it to circulate that I, just appears to be an easier ask now.
Yeah.
If you talk to a fundraiser, they might give you a different opinion.
Yeah. I think the challenge is that when we opened Eastern, for those of you who were around for a really long time, when we opened Eastern, we did not have enough operational general fund dollars to really staff that facility. And at that time, library materials was part of the general fund. So the decision was made, and it was, I mean, it was the right move at the time, absolutely, that funding for the materials budget would come from equipment bonds. So that amount in the equipment bonds, I think now is perhaps more constrained than general fund for the city. Because I think overall city funding with increases in property values, because pretty much all of us probably got increases in our assessment. Right now, the general fund looks pretty good. Now, why it's going to look that way in the future, who knows? I mean, so having it be bonded with equipment bonds keeps some of that volatility out of there. But maybe there's some sort of variety of combinations that can be looked at in the future where, to help us out with this particular shortfall. But like I said, I think we're starting to fall a little behind in terms of what some of our other libraries are, are doing, so. Then if we keep on going down, so in blue there, you see, that's the eBook circulation. We don't CIRC a lot of eBooks, and I think that that's two things. I think that traditionally, we have seen Davenport Library patrons be slow adopters of some of this technology. So, so that has been a thing for a really long time, that I think we are slow adopters. The, the other thing is that we can't buy enough copies so that people don't necessarily have long wait lines for some of these things. So that goes back to.
Some of mine are around 12 weeks.
Joe?
Can we get, is there a way to get an extension for a day or so on an eBook?
If nobody's waiting for it.
The, I don't think the system allows that.
It does, I mean, it cuts off right now.
No, it does, if no one's waiting for it.
If no one's waiting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, does it?
It's right there with your management. You just say you want to extend it, but if someone's waiting, which it tells you, then no. It'll go like, yes, wait, I was, wait, I was in the middle of.
I, I think if they could give it a one hour or two hour grace period, it would make life, family life, much easier. I get that.
That's not going to happen.
Cussing, I only have 40 pages left.
But they tell you ahead of time, they tell you like.
Yes, and then my dinner has to wait. I'm just kidding, Sylvia.
Tell it to someone who cares. No, it's frustrating, it is, but it's.
Yeah, and some of that, since we use a third-party vendor for that, that's not something that library policy follows, I don't think. I mean, we can, we can double check those settings, and we can certainly make.
I did my due diligence.
We don't have a lot of.
There's going to be a good deal.
Yeah, so, and the other confusing part about those is that some of those items are things that we purchase. We did, I'm pro-put a library purchase. Some of them are items that the Rivershare Consortium purchases.
Right.
So, so there's different ownership and probably, and I don't think there are different rules. I think we try to keep that all the same so we didn't confuse people more than we had to, so.
I did notice a change during COVID. I was able to get a lot more books on E than I had before.
Yeah, that's because we've done that extremely.
But I would welcome many, many, many more.
Right, yeah.
It's my, it's my preferred way of reading.
Yeah, and the copies are expensive. So it often, especially for something newer, it can often cost us more to buy the eBook than to buy the print.
That's sometimes, but that's nice too on Amazon as well.
And we can't purchase those and keep them forever. So that's the other thing, is we can, we can purchase and we get so many CIRCs before we have to buy it again. The number is usually, what, about 25?
Somewhere around that.
Somewhere, somewhere in there. Or we can purchase it and we can license it for a year, a year or two years.
Something like that.
More and more are moving to CIRCs. Yeah, and then it doesn't, if it's licensed for a certain time period, it doesn't matter how many people read it. But, you know, once that year is over, then it goes away. So, so then we have to buy it again in order to keep like back filing, you know? So if we wanted to have like a whole series, you know, so an author comes out and they, they publish a series of three books, and one comes out a year. If we want to have all three of those available, if we want to have the first one available when the third one comes out for people who discovered the third one and then want to read the backstory, we have to keep buying that stuff, right? Whereas if it's, if it's an actual print book, then we just have to make sure we don't, that we keep it on the shelf.
Right.
They have it available, we don't have to buy it again in order to keep it there, so.
Waiting times are pretty long. But I don't, I don't know as compared to print books. Because I don't get as many of those, like, or there, there's maybe a really long waiting list for those too. Yeah, with a similar title.
Some of that depends, things that are brand new and bestsellers, they will only license us one copy. So we might buy eight copies of the print to fill our whole list.
Right.
But it doesn't matter how long the whole list is in the eBook because they will only let us buy one.
Okay, so sometimes for some of these books, you have one copy.
Because that's all.
And they're sharing it in the.
That's fine, yeah. So we'll have one copy, Rivershare will have one copy, Bad Dark will buy one copy. So you're only hopefully competing with Davenport patrons, but.
Well, I just adjusted my expectations, you know? Because I used to just be like, no, I want it right now, and I'm going to order it right now. But now I'm like, no, I'm waiting for the back of a copy. That's my COVID change, so.
And then if we go down one more line, whoop, it was, it was, it was there already. CIRC of physical video recordings. So when we start to talk about overall library circulation, this number looks pretty good compared to other, some of the other libraries. This number pre-COVID was much higher. So the percentage of our circulation pre-COVID that was DVDs was much higher than our peer libraries. In this building, we circled more DVDs, right? It was, it was one of our very highest. With people not being able to get DVDs available and streaming, and as far as we can see right now, they're not coming back, right? So we don't know if that's going to hold in the future, you know? Families who received the, the really low-cost internet connection so that their kids could do schoolwork, we don't know if they'll be able to maintain those. So there are a lot of question marks there. But when we look at our overall CIRC, that lack of DVD CIRC is impacting the total by a much greater percentage than other libraries. And, and these other libraries, we've all talked about it, they're seeing the same thing, that their DVD CIRC has certainly dropped as streaming has become more available. And that was one of the reasons why we wanted to add that streaming service, that new canopy streaming service. But it's, it's impacting us more because of the high percentage of items that DVDs have always been of our total CIRC, right? So, so we're seeing a, a bigger impact to the, to the total line there. The next blue one down, retrieval electronic information. This is my current soapbox, and the state library has heard about it. And we'll probably continue to talk to them about it. But they don't allow us to count any of the access that our patrons do for the things that we create and that, and that we host here. The local history databases, if a patron uses those and retrieves information on it, we don't get to count that. If a patron goes to the Upper Mississippi Valley Digital Image Archive and looks at an image in our collection that we've digitized and cataloged to make available there, we can't count that. We maintain, for the state library, when we became the Patent Trademark Resource Center, there's a database of Iowa inventors. So our patent librarian currently maintains that, and they don't let us count that as an access. So, and they have, you know, there are good reasons for it. Some of it is what they're being asked for from Institute for Museum and Library Services, the nation, the national kind of, you know, board that takes a look at all that and, and looks at our statistics. But just kind of to share with you that those items are, are heavily used, but they're not reflected in this. So that's just kind of one of our current frustrations. And like I said, we've had conversation with the person in charge of statistics at the state library. You and I arranged the state librarian in a meeting like last week or the week before. So they've all heard about it. Future. And part of it is that use by Iowa residents of these things. Makes sense because, you know, we're an Iowa library, and they're looking at use by Iowa residents. But we could tell that because we can track where the, where the user's ISP is coming from, right? So chances are we're not, or if we're wrong, we're going to be wrong only by a small percentage in those that we report, because we do those analytics on them. We know, you know, which patrons are coming from Davenport and which ones are coming from Sri Lanka, and probably somebody who's fishing for something and looking for a way to hack into our, our network. So, so we can generally identify those things, so. And I think, and then the total circulation, I think, was the last one. Go up again, the little, yep, it's a yellow one underneath, right underneath there. So, yeah, so again, the, the university towns, Iowa City and Ames, they always traditionally have probably circled the most items. But we, we do need to certainly promote our collections because our CIRC per capita is really not where it should be. So this is everybody's COVID-related, you know, or COVID-impacted numbers. And they certainly show where, where we have room for growth, and that's in the strategic plan to try to, to first get back to where we were pre-COVID and then work to grow those numbers from there, so. And this is certainly not the only measure of use of a public library. You know, the gate count, attendance at programs, the public computer use, all those things are really important measures of what we do. Community outreach, all of that, but I think this is also a number worth, worth looking at. But, so as, as you looked at these numbers, I guess what I was trying to do was to say, if you were just looking at total circulation, there's a lot of moving parts that go into that number. And, and that's certainly one that we, and so we wanted to provide some, just additional context to all of that, so.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you for that, though, because I'm just going to pull down a couple of things. You have a much better job than I could have. Yeah, maybe you should think about doing a blog on. No, this is, this is very interesting. But while we're talking about promoting reading, the table right inside the front door is the 2021 Staff Picks booklet. So I might get some ideas for new books you'd like to read there. Those copies are available there. I haven't looked at the extras, I just picked it up on the way in.
And then Steve, if I might add, if you.
The library also does it online.
Oh, okay.
So.
Malavika says we do it online.
No, I mean, some, some of the Facebook posts I've seen, I staff picks, that's what I was watching.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe next year we think about adding some. Rusty's.
Yeah.
From the shampoo.
Yes. And I'll just throw one out, if you want to read a book about library lovers. I think the name of it is The Secret Syrian Library.
Oh, wow.
And this is a story about Syria being, you know, town in Syria being attacked by the Assad regime and what they go through to maintain a library while they're under attack. And it's really fascinating.
Well, and Klaa Kupu Land is dedicated to librarians. Actually, it's written by the guy who wrote All the Light We Cannot See, it's your door. It's a little, it's not a highly accessible book for many, but, yeah. And it's very interesting.
So, thank you very much for that, Amy. Appreciate that. And thank you, everyone, for your time. And there's no other business to be brought for this forum. I will, I move to adjourn. Thank you, Tom.
A second, but.
Sylvia? So a motion of second to adjourn. I'll call for the vote, Malavika.
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda? Oh, Amanda's gone, sorry. Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries.
Before we go, I have a request. Can we have an impromptu photo with Amy in it? Sure, it's a pre-social media assumption.